Hi everyone, welcome to the March Town Hall Meeting. We're super excited to have you all with us here. And our town hall meetings are always held on the last Sunday of the month. My name is Emily Hahn and I'm an intern at the Kumar for Congress campaign. And I will be moderating today's town hall meeting. I attend Doerty Valley High School and I'm enjoying my time with the fellowship team. In this internship, I mainly work on managing Rishi's social media postings and writing published statements. First, I'm very delighted to introduce you all to Rishi. Rishi is a Silicon Valley high-tech executive who brings an actionable and results-driven mindset into politics. In 2018, the people of Saratoga re-elected Rishi with the most votes in the city history for fearlessly addressing issues that others found daunting. Rishi brings a people-centric platform to the table and a track record of getting things done. In the 2020 general election, Rishi garnered more votes than any other challengers have in this district in the last thirty years, falling short just by forty-five thousand votes when challenging a twenty-year veteran incumbent. Today, Rishi is here to talk about some of his policy agenda, such as the first big tech hearing of 2021 that was held last week, immigration crisis, censorship, housing legislations, and other issues. During the meeting, please put any questions you have in the Q and A chat box, and Rishi will be happy to answer all of them at the end. Now I'll pass it on to Rishi.
Thank you, Emily. Thank you so much. As you can see, Emily is a great leader we have on our team. And she's one of our interns, but she's got phenomenal energy, ideas, innovation. And she's leading actually, very interestingly, a few different tracks, part of our fellowship program. Our fellowship program is in the third year. And we are very blessed and lucky to have folks like Emily, who are showing me the way, who are guiding me, who are leading our team and making magic happen with respect to how we are engaging with our congressional district. So as you all know, this is like the third year of our campaign. And obviously, like Emily said, we fell short. But forty-five thousand votes and this is sort of version three of our campaign and we'll do a better job of it. And you know, Emily did a quick intro and I really thank Emily for that. Now, if you look at, I'm just gonna turn off Slack, that's the collaboration tool like campaign users. And otherwise, it's ping, ping, ping. We have lots of folks who are busy working and collaborating on Slack, so let me turn that off. Now, from a standpoint of introduction, obviously, I'm a tech guy. And I'm actually an anomaly of a politician because I never ever thought that I would be in politics. And that's the reality of it. You know, if you go back even like, like ten years back, a political run was never in the realm of possibility. Because, you know, I was working for IBM and I was enjoying my job and solving problems in the world of tech. And that was, I felt my calling for the rest of my life. But what I discovered was there were challenges around me that needed to be solved. And these were issues, burning issues, and typically what would happen is I would look to my left or right, you know, who is, who is gonna step up? And, and those problems would sort of pop into, into my direction, I don't know why. And, and eventually I realized that, hey, it's nobody, you know, you have to do it. I, I still remember that moment where I printed out a flyer and there was a burglary in our neighborhood and I wanted to go invite my neighbor, neighbors to a gathering to discuss the burglary and take action, you know. So my take is, you know, we cannot point fingers, you know, pointing fingers is very easy. But what action can I take to solve that problem, right? So I still remember standing outside that first door. And, and I, I was like, why am I doing this? No, really, I, I think back at that moment many, many times. Because, because it's like, why, why do you want to do this? You are meant to be near your laptop, working away. And I, I used to work even in the weekends, which I still do. You know, a workaholic, you work pretty hard, but that's the Silicon Valley culture. So I stood outside that door, wondering if I should really knock. And I was actually a little afraid because I didn't know what would happen to me when somebody opened the door. And finally, when they did, they were like, oh, you know, I've lived here for thirty years, there's no problem. I don't know what you're doing here, please leave, you know? And, and that would have been the end of my political career or, or my community activism. If I decided that, yes, I believe this person, let me, let me get back to my comfort zone of my laptop and keep working away. But you know, I, I swallowed my pride that day. And I went to the next door and by the, by that afternoon, in a, in a few hours of walking and talking to my neighbors, I discovered some super friendly neighbors and it completely energized me, you know, I, I really, I, you know, I I'm social, I like being around people. And those conversations were extremely, extremely good for me to continue down this path. And even now, you know, I like to go door to door, I like to knock on neighbors, talk to neighbors, talk to them about issues. And that's the only way I can educate myself, which is the reason why we're having this conversation today. And I really appreciate all of you joining us. I mean, our town hall meetings in the first couple of years had, let's use this word, scarce attendance, you know. It, the people looked at this run and said, it's a highly improbable run. And, but last month, we had the most attending ever in, in a, in a town hall meeting. So we were quite happy to see that. There's a lot more interest and I can see that same thing today as well. Now, it's a beautiful day outside, you know, it's seventy degrees and I'm sipping some homemade lemonade here, I'm enjoying that. And we'll have a good conversation, right? We make it interactive. So let's talk a little bit about, we call it the rearview mirror and the windshield view, right? So what is, what does the rear, rear view look like? You know, essentially, we ran a pretty hard campaign, we had a thousand people army who came from twenty-eight states. And together, we were out there engaging in the district. And I believe we, the, the district discovered an unprecedented engagement with us. I mean, how many congressional candidates have actually taken the trouble of knocking on doors? And early, very early on, by August of 2019, I had gone to pretty much every single home. Sorry, every single city. And I'd had multiple conversations with people about issues. So I was, you know, if you look at our district, it's quite spread out, spread out across three counties. Loma Mar, Pescadero, or, or sitting in Felton or Bonny Dune, you know, I mean, I was there pretty much all over towns that many of us may have never heard of. But that's the commitment I had. I had wonderful conversations. And that unprecedented engagement is the reason why we did what we did. Our TikTok videos went viral, you know, and I'll be very candid. When my, when my intern said, let's do TikTok, I was not too keen for it and I was like, I don't know how it's gonna be helpful. Plus, we had this whole thing about the thing going on with China. But we took the plunge and we discovered it really empowered our interns, you know. They, their creative juices were flowing, they came up with some pretty phenomenal videos. And I think no campaign video has gone to one point four million views. And, and so I was quite delighted. Overall, I was delighted. I'm not so sure if it helped our run in terms of advancing and getting support from the district. But we did hear stories like a child telling the parent, hey, make sure you vote for Rishi. And the parent is like, who's this guy, Rishi? How do you know Rishi? And what they said was, we have been watching him on TikTok, you know? So, so we loved it, you know, and that's the reason why we enjoy working with, with the youth because they have some very refreshing ideas. This is not something that we have done today. We have been running these Lego Robotics Bootcamp, we have been running the Entrepreneurship Bootcamp. And in fact, many of the endorsement statements that come to us is, "Rishi, my child benefited from your STEM programs. That's why I'm gonna support you," right? Any which way, people were discovering that it was a reason why they had to support us. But really, there was one reason. I think the branding was solidly established in terms of who we are. We are a problem solver. As a mechanical engineer, I'm not a career politician. And then I speak my conscience. It's not about going left, it's not about going right, it's about going forward. And this is what I've done in the city of Saratoga. Why does someone like me win with the most votes in city history? Why, why would that happen? And I really don't have a base in Saratoga, right? Typically, you, you, in, in your city, you have a base. But, you know, I do have a base and that's, that's the world of tech. In Saratoga, there are lots of technologists, people from the world of tech. They look at me, an anomaly of a politician, and we were able to solve some big challenges. We took on the challenge of water company, we took on the challenge of burglary. We stopped a major development project on a hillside in a high fire zone. And so, you know, what I did was, I didn't care about the establishment politics. I didn't care about who the power mongers are. But I sort of defined my own strategy, my own tactical execution to fix certain challenges in the community, which is really what I'm going to do. And which is probably the reason why that branding has been established. Like, the other day, I got an endorsement statement from somebody in Mountain View. And perhaps the person is here, and I've never met this person. And, you know, this person said that, oh, Rishi has tremendous energy, we want his energy in Washington. And this is what Saratoga has been talking about. So I, I love seeing those messages. And I love seeing those messages because the branding that has been established here in Saratoga is now trickling into different parts of the congressional district. Today, I did something. I invested thirty-five bucks to buy, this is the Cook Report, a political report. And what they are saying is, the redistricting is gonna happen. Oh yes, I knew that, we knew that. They have kind of defined the new boundaries. It seems like we are going to have a new congressional district. And likely, we will lose the coastal areas. And, you know, I've, I've really enjoyed, it, it creates a huge amount of serenity in me when I'm out there walking in, in places like, like Ziante and Long Pico or Pescadero or La Honda, right? It's just amazing. We have a treasure there and I hope we can keep it that way, you know? But, based on the redistricting, it will likely be moved out of Congressional District Eighteen. But let me net it out. What I seen that report is that Cubardino and Sunnyvale potentially will be added into our district because San Francisco has shrunk in population. And so, so we'll get pulled. So Nancy Pelosi is gonna pull and people or areas from south of San Francisco or, or perhaps all of San Francisco will now be moved into that district. And Jackie Speer will have to pull from south. And then we have to pull from somewhere else. So anyway, all that stuff is gonna happen. And, you know, it doesn't matter what happens with their district lines. We are watching the, the redistricting commission, they are currently meeting there. The boundaries will be drawn up by like August, you know, but you're not holding a breath on that. But we're gonna run a pretty hard campaign. So, so this is really what happened, you know, forty-five thousand votes, a million phone calls are made. We, we called our seniors during the pandemic and said, can we help you with groceries, medications, and masks? And this one story I really love, you know, the, the senior, he was probably like eighty-six years old or something. And he said, you know, I, I would like to request you to drop off coffee for me. And he said, this is for my wife, and I forget their names unfortunately. And, and he said, this wife has been, he said something like, she and I were together in school, in like elementary school. So he says, I've known her for like, I don't know, like eighty years or something. And I would like to see how we can get her favorite coffee for her. So my wife was like my kind enough and she scampered to pick up the coffee and drop, drop it off. So these, these stories were very heartwarming because what we also did was, we established bunch of adult volunteers in every part of Silicon Valley. In every part of Silicon Valley and, and then we had a youth. We were, we launched a pandemic health center and they were funneling a request. We were calling and requests were being handled by the health center. And then we had adult volunteers who went and fulfilled those requests, right? So that's, that's what I see. And adversity is an opportunity to serve, you know? So I believe in rolling up my sleeves and, and doing what I can to, to do, to do that. Okay, so, so that's the part of, you know, what the, what the story was. Now, how is it looking forward, right? How, how, what are we going to do? Our plan is to see how we can optimize the path to victory. Now Congressman Esu has been there for twenty-eight years, now it'll be thirty years. A, a long time. It's an eternity in the world of politics. I believe our, our congressional district is ready for change. You know, we need a new flavor of politics because this partisan politics is completely broken. You know, there are a lot of fighting that happens in Washington. And I don't believe in playing that game because I'm a problem solver. I believe in figuring out, you know, what's the path to solve the big challenges. So let me talk about policies. We have written hundreds of policy papers. I don't know how many congressional runs in, in America have written hundreds of policy papers. We take the time, we take the time to analyze, we did take the time to learn, to discover, to enrich ourselves. And then we go out and write a policy paper, right? That's what we do. So if you go to my website, the search box is pretty good. And I invite everybody here to, to go to my website, use the search box, and find something that is of interest to you. You'll be surprised, the search box works really good. And I've been to many other websites of political leaders, they don't have a search box. So as a tech guy, we believe in making it easy for our people, right? So find something and you will find some, so many policy papers. I would like to touch upon two things, right? If you go to rishikumar.com/tech, you will see some of my policy viewpoints there. And, and perhaps Emily may want to send the link over to everybody. And so take a look at that paper. But recently, thank you, Emily, recently there was a hearing. How many of you know that? I don't know. But Thursday, there was a tech hearing. And Wednesday evening, I was actually watching some, some podcasts that they were talking about this upcoming, I was listening to. And, and then the next day played out and it was, once again, once again spoof videos are gonna come out, right? I mean, I don't know if you have seen the spoof videos from the prior tech hearings. You know, I think the one with Mark Zuckerberg was pretty phenomenal. They're, they were asking the Microsoft CEO about a Google problem. I mean, like totally clueless. And, you know, what they talk about is technological illiteracy with our congressional members. I don't say that. It's actually one of the congressional members of Silicon Valley who says that Washington is filled with technologically illiterate congressional members. And that, that is sad, you know, especially for Silicon Valley. We need tech savvy leaders, that's what I believe because, you know, we can solve some big challenges. So Jack Dorsey, the CEO of Twitter, you know, he, he tweeted while he was in the congressional hearing with a question mark. And then he said, yes or no, he was running a polling. Because our congressional leaders, they were, they were watching it a big time, right? If you, if you go and see that. But they were asking like yes or no questions. I mean, they had like two minutes or three minutes or something. And they were trying to compress as many questions. I mean, like, come on, give me a break here, you know? If I was in the shoes of Congressman Esu, firstly, I would be collaborating with our tech leaders here. I would make sure that they don't end in, end in a situation like this where they are now going to be slammed by both parties. Both parties are gunning for them, or, sorry, wrong, wrong usage of word. They are just wanting to figure out and how they can make big tech accountable, right? That's a very sad state. If I was a congressional rep, I would make sure I would collaborate because Silicon Valley is the taxation resource. We are the nineteenth largest economy, Silicon Valley. And California is like the sixth largest economy, right? Something like that. And that's because largely of Silicon Valley. So why can't we collaborate? So I have a great sense of tech. I believe we can collaborate and we can make sure that these types of situations would not happen. So my take is, you do not need to rein in big tech. But what I've been talking about for many years is that big tech needs a conscience. Needs a conscience because we are there, there's a big responsibility that big tech has. And we need to understand that responsibility and make sure that we are doing the right thing. And that's going to be one of our op-ed pieces. Big tech needs a conscience. We are currently working on that. So that brings me to the op-ed piece that we published last week about the housing push. And I'll keep it very brief because many of you might have seen that. But right now, there is a huge push for high-density housing. And it's the bills that are geared from Sacramento or across pretty much for all of California. But a huge focus is about Silicon Valley because land here is a golden goose. If you can build here, you'll make lots of money. And they disguise it with homelessness or the need for housing because of, we need affordable housing. But I promise you, what they're gonna build here is not gonna be affordable housing, it's gonna wreck the quality of life. So I invite you to take a look at that. If you go to rishikumar.com-managed-growth-managed-managed-growth, you will find the op-ed piece, it's already posted there, take a look at that. And it will provide you some context to, to, to my activism with respect to this housing and transportation. What we talk about is connecting twenty-one cities, sorry, twenty-one counties with high-speed transportation grid, which is not the bullet train because that's like nineteen-fifties technology. We are Silicon Valley, we can do a lot better. So taking a cutting-edge transportation system, net zero greenhouse gas, tunnel-based system, no. You cannot have surface transportation because cities, there'll be litigation, it will never go through for thirty years. Bullet train was a flawed project. So if you go to rishikumar.com/traffic, you will find my infrastructure investment project. President Joe Biden wants to invest like four trillion dollars, I like that. We need that, we need that investment now in America because we haven't done that. And we already have a plan for the Bay Area, which no other politician has ever offered in the last twenty years. In the dot com boom, we should have done something about it. But we haven't, we haven't. And this vision paper that we have can create an economy which is much more bigger than what we have in Silicon Valley today. So take a look at that, I'm happy to answer questions. And at this point, what we'll do is, back to Emily. I've been speaking for a long time and if you, if you leave politicians, I'm not a politician, but you know, we can talk non-stop. I see some very familiar, familiar faces. And what I'm gonna do is, before we turn this over to Emily, I'm gonna invite a couple of folks to just speak. And not everybody may get a chance, but let's start with, I'm gonna promote a couple of folks to panelist and they can, they can, if they have questions, they are welcome to speak up. So let's see. Hold on, just give me one second. Oh, here is, okay. And, okay, so we have three who have been promoted to panelist. So anybody who can, if you would like to unmute yourself, you are a panelist, if you feel comfortable turning on the video. Yeah, David McIntyre wants to speak.
Oh, hi. Rishi invited me to be the endorsements director. I, I've accepted that. I appreciate the opportunity to help the campaign. Been following Rishi for a couple of years now and really love his progressive message. I think we need leadership that is focused on the people, not on the corporations. And really glad to be a part of it. Thank you.
Great to have you, David. David and I, David lives in San Mateo County. And we, we met a couple of times and David showed up. We were doing town hall meetings in pretty much every corner of our district. We tried to be at all thirty-one cities of our congressional district. And that's how we met with David and he had some legitimate concerns about unaddressed needs. And so part of what we did, we rolled that into a policy statement. If you go to rishikumar.com/fire-safety, I believe it's rishikumar.com/fire-safety. That is a policy paper to address some of the challenges that go on the coastline. And I think we can do a lot better. So David, I really appreciate you finding us worthy to join our team and to support this run. And Hans Peter or Darshan, would you like to chime in? Okay, so Emily, back to you, if you, if you have any other questions.
Yeah, so before I speak, please put any of the questions you have for Rishi in the Q and A chat box. And we'll be addressing them either at the end or throughout the meeting. And so, again, our campaign is run by ourselves and we would really love your support. So there are two ways that you can support the Kumar for Congress campaign. First, if you like to be a volunteer or an intern in our Kumar for Congress program, you can check out the fellowship at kumar.com/fellowship or you can check out the volunteer director roles as well. And the second way that you're able to support us is, is to support us financially. And I will be sending a series of links in the chat if you are interested in supporting us. And we would really appreciate any support that you're willing to offer. Back to you, Rishi.
Excellent. So, you know, we would like to give everybody a chance to speak. And, you know, it's, it's open discussion. So as long as we are patient and we are willing to wait, everybody will get a chance. So do you have any questions on the chat window, Emily, so far?
Yeah, so far, Nidhesh Kumar asked a question saying, hello, Rishi, I am impressed by your STEM program and have a question around the local community. I asked for clarification, but Rishi, if you want to talk about your STEM program and the successes so far, I think that'd be a great idea.
Okay, great. Nitesh, thank you. Thank you so much for the question. And obviously, placed to my strength and not that you have planted this question, but so for many years, you know, as a mechanical engineer and somebody who worked in the software industry at IBM, I really believe that because of a good education, you know, I found a path into America as a graduate student of mechanical engineering. And I had the motivation to create this opportunity for a lot of other people. So one of the things I'm extremely proud of is to be on the California Department of Education Computer Science Strategic Implementation Panel. And what we have done is, we have defined a K to twelve computer science curriculum for the state of California that goes live twenty-twenty-two, yay, next year. I've been saying this for like three years now, you know, sound like, come on, let's get it going. So next year, every K, every child in a public school program, K to twelve, will be studying computer science. And I feel very lucky to be part of an amazing group that put together this, the syllabus, you know. We, it went to a certain level of detail, but I'm very excited about that. But the reason why I was appointed into that panel by the California Senate Rules Committee, I believe, if I remember that right. They had seen all the STEM programs that I was doing in, working with Mayor Sam Licardo of San Jose. And he and I sat, sat down for coffee a couple of times, brainstorming as to what we can do to help the students of San Jose. So the Entrepreneurship Bootcamp programs we launched, which would teach them the art of startup. And we had industry veterans who would show up to teach. And the city of San Jose provided laptops and we actually helped them build a startup model. They would, three or four students would huddle and they would collaborate and they would sort of do, do their thing, you know? So, so this is what we did. And then we also ran a Silicon Valley Youth Tech Day. The winner, the startup team that won would provide seed money. We also had been running Lego Robotics Bootcamp. Before I got started, we would have a single, one or two teams formed locally. And by the time, a few years later, we have almost twenty-four, twenty-five teams that, that get formed. So this is part of my mission and when we get elected, our plan is to ensure that the youth of our community will have these types of opportunities. We have the tech museum, but what I intend to do is to, is to get these sort of innovation centers established that are run with the collaboration of the public sector, the private sector, and also the nonprofit. And then we create opportunities for youth like Emily to, to be part of that tech story where they can join, meet youth like themselves, meet mentors from the world of tech. And together, they are figuring out a path of innovation very early on. Because the challenge we have is, I think there is a lot of learning, there is a special DNA of innovation that happens here. But none of that, the torch is never passed on to the next generation because we let it sort of happen automatically, you know, we sort of, students, they sort of figured out a ma, a path, pathway. But, you know, we obviously have great role models, but there is no set process of doing that. So my approach would be to ensure that we create an innovation economy which will be much more bigger and every youth, every child from our community will have access to these types of programs.
That's a great answer, Rishi. And actually, we just received a follow-up from Nidhesh who is asking for, how will we fix the issues that were caused by Congresswoman Anet issue? And what are some of your policies that you want to implement differently than hers?
That's an excellent question and I will answer that. So Emily, if there are follow-up questions, can we please hold them until everybody gets to ask a question? And then we can answer. But I'm gonna answer this one because we, we, we went through it. So, you know, like, I, I sort of touched upon this. I think there needs to be a close collaboration between a elected representative with our tech leaders. So I'll tell you one thing, there are, I, now I can talk about this, just this for like thirty minutes because I've seen a lot of mishappenings with how business has been conducted in the valley, right? I can see because I see from both, you know, I, I'm an expert at wearing different shoes. The shoes of the other guys, right? I wear shoes all the time to understand their point of view, right? And I can see from the standpoint of us as elected leaders and I can see from the standpoint of a technologist, the, the innovation economy that we have going here, right? And there needs to be a close collaboration. So I'll just say one thing right now. What we are gonna do is, we are going to have a roundtable every month, every month where we will invite, and this is not something I've talked about today, I've been talking about it for two years. Bring the valley tech innovators. Sometimes it could be technologists, sometimes it could be CEOs, sometimes it could be Jack Dorsey and Sundar Pichai and Mark Zuckerberg. Sometimes it would be the CEOs of startups because I want to sit down with them, I want to see what their problems are. And what I'm gonna tell them is, look, what are your problems? How can we help you? And here is what I feel is a problem with how the tech business has been conducted. And my suggestion is to please tweak that model because otherwise, you know, there'll be the, the big hammer that comes down with regulation, then you don't want that, right? So I want to have that active dialogue with our entrepreneurs. So I want to have that active dialogue with our entrepreneurs, right? And also what I would tell them is, here is where I need help. It doesn't mean campaign money, it's not campaign money. Because right now, you know, every politician is going after those with the big wallets and asking money, right? I'm not going to play that game. All my money will come from people, no PACs. And we take lots of small contributions, big contributions, whatever, right? But it's, that's not the purpose of the meeting. My meeting would be, I need help, which is what? Affordable housing. So when Google is building out a big campus, can you please build housing? And can you please make ten percent, twenty percent affordable, right? So, so we would love to see that type of collaboration between our public sector, the private sector, and also the nonprofits, you know, we not need to get them involved and there needs to be a better partnership. Okay, back to you, Emily.
Yeah, definitely. And if you are interested in supporting our campaign, again, we're run on all with the money by the people. So if you are interested in supporting us, I dropped some links in the chat and feel free to contribute as little or as much as you want. So the next question we have is from Sabri and he stated, thank you, Rishi, for being a people politician. We love your vision. My daughter is here with me watching the webinar right now. Could you possibly talk about the internship program?
Oh, great. Yes. You know, this is for me the most exciting part of running for office. Because youth empowerment truly excites me. And so I go back to my days in Bombay, India, growing up in a middle-class family, abject poverty all around me. And, you know, somehow I found a way out through education and found myself into a graduate school studying mechanical engineering. I was actually working on a PhD, but I dropped out because I wanted to be part of the real world. So, so that's my story, right? So for me, enabling the youth with education, but also leadership is extremely important. And that's why we have structured the fellowship program, the internship program we have. And the link to apply, if any one of you have sons or daughters who would be interested to be part of a program, it's, Emily is going to put the link for you. And it's, yes, so it's rishikumar.com/fellowship, which is, we, we have a pretty structured program. There are industry leaders like, like David McIntyre, like Darshan Patel, people who have joined us to coach our, our interns. And in fact, Darshan's son is also part of her program. So many of our parents who have child in, who have, who have a child who has joined the fellowship, they also take the time to volunteer, because this is the only way we can make a program like this work. It's very exciting, the kind of talent we have. And we have, my, my whole objective is to create empowerment to our youth. And you can see how Emily is moderating a town hall meeting. And I don't know, Ben have seen another congressional rep have an intern moderate a town hall meeting. But this is really why what we do with our summer program. We want to spark some seeds in, we want to seed the minds of our youth. Many of them are from high school and college. And it's a pretty phenomenal program that we have structured. Today, we have over twenty-nine directors and the plan is to have almost fifty directors in place to, to guide our team of interns. And it's a very nice organization that we have set up. It's like running a mid-sized company. So all my, my experience from the world of tech, I still work in the world of tech is all coming to good use with this program that we're running. So that's all I would say, but I invite you to take a look at some of the testimonials at rishikumar.com/fellowship. And I believe Darshan wants to say something.
Thank you, Rishi. I was just waiting for my turn and sorry, when you called me earlier, I was feeling with my mute button and somehow did not unmute in time. Okay. And then glad, I think we are talking at the right point. So let me tell you my experience. My son was part of Rishi's internship program last year. And I was watching him, how he was taking part in the campaign and contributing to it. Rishi had told me once that, you know what, my campaign runs like a startup and I was said, okay, let me see and how it works. I was really, really impressed. And then my experience was when we arranged a fundraiser and, and the process which we went through. So, and the way we were coached and, you know, the preparation which went through, I was really impressed with all the talent Rishi had gathered and made, he has, he had mentored them. So much so that this year I myself joined the campaign. So I, I'm going to, I'm going to be part of his social media team and I'm going to take care of TikTok, TikTok area. And I hope I would be able to do justice, whatever Rishi is expecting me to do. But glad to be part of this journey and really excited to be here. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Darshan. And this is what it takes to, to make our program viable. I really appreciate all our twenty-nine directors and this family is growing, you know, I love it. We have lots of meetings and the meetings are high-energy discussions. And it's not like, sometimes it's a lot of arguments, you know, we, we debate a point of view. And this is what makes us better and stronger. So thank you, Darshan. Back to you, Emily.
Yeah, so as an intern in this program, I would just like to say that this internship has taught me a lot. It literally has so many amazing opportunities and places where you can showcase your leadership in your area of interest. There is technology, media arts, writing, all sorts of different channels that you can take a part in. So I definitely, definitely recommend applying if you're a high schooler or a college student. So the next question that we have for Rishi is from Daphne Wang. And she stated that what policies do you have visions to help, to have help to alleviate issues that the pandemic has caused?
Yes, so we have written op-ed pieces on that. And in fact, that was a huge focus from March all the way to November. We were squarely focused on the pandemic. And if you go to rishikumar.com slash, let's see, slash, I believe it's coronavirus. Yes, it's rishikumar.com/coronavirus. And you will find a policy paper and also lots of discussions, videos. We had, we were running a reality check series, a reality check with Rishi. And we had lots of discussions with healthcare professionals talking about the virus. And really it was geared to helping us write a policy. So I think there are two or three major components of that and I'm going to just quickly run through that. But I invite, invite all of you to check out that policy paper we have on the website. And it was an op-ed piece that we actually wrote by, I think it was like in September, but we sent it to the Merc. But I believe it was so close to the election time that the Merc did not publish it. And so it is still on the website. If you search for op-ed, there are a couple of components. One is the vaccination program is flawed and we need to come up with the process. And to some extent, our vaccination was reactive, you know, we didn't have a plan. And even now, we are sort of struggling through it. Every state has its own program. It needs to be centralized to an extent, even the distribution. Now, the distribution is completely flawed. You know, when you look at the scheduling system, the airline industry, they solved this problem twenty years back. Who can be waitlisted? And if you have seats that open up, how do you fill it up, right? We don't have that system yet. I mean, you know, they, they, there has been talk about throwing away vaccines because the people who want, who signed up did not show up. I mean, that's a tragedy. And, and then they would literally go to the street and invite anybody who was passing by and say, do you want to take a vaccination? This is America. That's not the way we should run a program. So, so my approach is, I, I talk about it a lot. If you, if you look at my tweets, I talk about a need for the public sector and the private sector to join hands. Because if you did that, you know, now you could have a simple software, a scheduling system that would drive how our vaccination program is going to be distributed. And have it in a very, very process-driven manner, because, because once you have the tools of the trade that are used, it becomes a lot easier. Vaccination is one. The pandemic preparedness plan, you know, I think we, we completely fell to our knees, like South Korea was doing drive-through testing the very next week, the very next week of, of the pandemic. And it took us almost three or four months. Now, Santa Clara County, my hat's off to them. I think we are ahead of the curve here in terms of what I've seen, Santa Cruz County, San Mateo County. I'm very impressed, like I went and did COVID testing a couple of times. It was like flawless. You know, you were sitting in a car and we went to, what is it, the Santa Clara Fairgrounds and twenty minutes sitting in car and then eventually somebody walks up, they test you, two days later, it shows up, right? There are areas, though, we can improve, you know, I, I think it needs to, there needs to be an electronic offering, you know, not paper where you have to wait forty-eight hours before it shows up. You should create these types of dashboards so that people will have access to data much more quickly. Right now, when I've heard this, when people go for vaccination, they get a paper form. I mean, we are not in the nineteen fifties, guys. We need to, like some other countries have QR codes. They, they send a app to you, sorry, they send a text to you with your confirmation that yes, you got the vaccine. You know, things like that. I think there is ample room for improvement. And we were actually going to write a policy paper on vaccinations. But right now in America, hundred and twenty-five million vaccines have been given out. And I think like thirty, forty million people have already been vaccinated twice. And with Johnson and Johnson coming, the, right now, the plan is April first, I think forty-five plus or fifty plus, yeah, fifty plus. And then after that, April fifteenth, pretty much everybody, right? So, so we, I, I feel quite blessed to be here in America because certain countries will have to wait for the vaccine until twenty twenty-three. Can you believe that? We are very lucky because Big Pharma, we have Pfizer, Moderna, you know, they have been warp speed, it worked out really well. But, you know, we have to iron out the little king so that in future, here is the big threat we have, bioterrorism. Bioterrorism is a big threat. And the next wars would be fought based upon how you can bring the economy down to its knees. So we need to approach it slightly differently and we need to invest in ensuring that a pandemic or bioterrorism will be handled in a much more better manner. So that's a quick summary. I can, these are hot-button issues, I can talk about it a lot, but I do want to be cognizant of time. We are down to the final fifteen minutes and we would love to see if there are more questions. And I've put a few people on the, on the panelist, if they would like to speak up, please unmute yourself and speak, but back to Emily.
Yeah, so we actually have a few more questions in the Q and A box. One of them is from Manav Patel, who asks, what can Rishi do to help affordable housing in the Bay Area?
Yep, rishikumar.com/homellessness. And Emily, if you could please put that link in there. So you want a policy? Well, we perhaps have a policy already, right? So we have put in quite some time to, to invest into this, to come up with pragmatic policies. These are not moonshots. These are not moonshots at all. And it's very much possible and doable. And so please take a look at that. Oh, Hans Peter, you can unmute yourself and just ask a question if you like. Yep. So let me just run through this question of Manav. Okay, so homelessness, you know, let's talk about the, the policy we have with respect to expanding out housing. You know, when you look at the push for high-density housing without urban planning, this will put traffic to a halt. I mean, we'll be stuck at traffic, at street intersections for like fifteen, twenty minutes. Imagine being stuck at El Camino and Homestead for like twenty minutes or El Camino and Page Mill for like twenty-five minutes. That's the reality. If you keep pushing housing, we have to come up with a pragmatic plan. So my plan, we look to expand our housing in different parts of California, like Stockton, Modesto, Sacramento, Fresno, Bakersfield, and building a high-speed transportation grid. Now, this would create affordable housing like nothing can, you know, our affordable housing, ten X more affordable housing and true affordable housing, because they talk about putting affordable housing here in Silicon Valley. It's very hard to have affordable housing because if you, if you build out anywhere in Sunnyvale, you know, even a town home will be like a million and a half dollars, two million dollars. That's not affordable housing at all. But if you put it in Stockton or, or different parts, like we, in fact, I tweeted just the other day about the affordability of housing in different cities of California. And you can see that obviously we are, there's a big spike with respect to Bay Area. And then everything else is like, you know, way below there, right? So you can build affordable housing in different parts of California and also create jobs in those areas. Because then our, when we build a high-speed transportation grid, Stockton to San Jose in fifteen minutes, young engineers would live in Stockton, they would raise a family and then they want to do a startup. They would actually do their startup right there in Stockton. And the housing there is like, for half a million dollars, you can get a nice little palace, mansion, right? So that's the opportunity we need to create. Right now, there is tech Exodus going on. We are work, working on a policy paper on that. Now, if this continues to play out, we are going to lose our tax resources. Elon Musk has already left town, there are companies left town like Palantir Technologies, like HP. We need to stop the bleed. And the way we need to do that is to come up with a pragmatic plan for our state of California. So hopefully answered that question, Manav, for you. If you have follow-on questions, please do put it on the chat window. And perhaps Emily, shall we go to Hans Peter?
Yeah, Mr. Hans Peter, feel free to unmute or turn your camera if you feel comfortable and ask your question directly to Rishi.
All right, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Peter, hi. This is, I'm, I'm the first time that I participated in this. It's really refreshing. Some of the thoughts I hear, I think is very refreshing political views on the, I'm looking forward to hearing more of it. So my, my question was, I'm in biotech, worked very early on in a genentech and now in startup companies in Silicon Valley. So I was curious to hear your vision on where biotech should go in the future, you know, within Silicon Valley, within San Mateo.
So, so biotech, you know, I think there is a tremendous opportunity for us to, to look at the innovation in this particular space to address bioterrorism. So my take is, especially given the world we are, I mean, there are multiple ways we can answer this question. But if you look at the big problem we have with the pandemic that really brought us down, so many jobs lost, livelihoods lost. My, as a congressional member, what I would like to do is to bring our thought leaders from the biotech industry and figure out how this industry can be, can be sort of reoriented and channeled to address the issues with bioterrorism, bio-warfare. And to ensure that future, a future pandemic or a future warfare will not impact America to the extent that it did right now, you know. And I, I think that's a great focus area for us. There is tremendous innovation happening. And as a policymaker for Silicon Valley, my objective would be to ensure that we are make, we are making it easy for the industry to innovate. And in fact, any help that is needed from, I, I call it the umbrella of the public sector. You need to provide the air cover for the innovation. You don't need to curb them. Don't try to rope them in because that model has never quite worked out. And as long as they are, they, they have a conscience, that is important, they need to have a conscience, do the right thing. Then, you know, all sort of, all hell breaks loose with respect to innovation and solving problems for mankind and making America much more prosperous and offering those jobs that we need, not just here in California, but pretty much every part of the United States. Hopefully that answers your question, Hans Peter.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Great. So next we have a question from Sabri. He states that, thank you, Rishi, for your amazing efforts. I have a follow-up question on education. I think one of the biggest pain point in our K eight education system is that there is no system in place for our children to succeed. Unfortunately, the success of our children depends on families' income level. Can we do something to better on this as a country? So our kids have an equal opportunity? What is your opinion on this issue?
Yes, Sabri, that's an excellent question. And the income inequality is draining America right now. And if you look at the last twenty years, I think the, the gap has, has significantly increased over the last twenty years. And we are not creating enough opportunities for those, I call, for example, I looked when we did the Silicon Valley Coaters Club and working with Mayor Sam Licado, we would actually pick a community that was most disadvantaged, where they did not have uncles and aunts from the world of tech that were providing inspiration for these kids to find a career in the world of tech, right? So there were some huge challenges and it comes because of income inequality. So addressing the income inequality gap is extremely important to me. And we need to, so I believe in this, that if you take the elevator up to the second floor, you have to send it down and make sure that you're able to bring other people back up. So it's a key component of what I seek to do as a congressional rep. Now, there are kids who are left behind and, you, you know, Sabri, from what you say. And we as a public sector elected leaders can do a lot better. And that's the reason why I ran these STEM programs for so many years. And, you know, I referenced the, some of my plans on this. For example, creating these innovation academies where we can bring our youth and have them collaborate with the world of tech. Have them find mentors and, and let's, let's figure out, you know, who can be the next millionaire from these gems that we have here locally. Because, you know, we, we have kids who are never quite exposed. And in the schools that they go to, nobody quite discovers that this kid has the potential to be an amazing innovator, right? If he, if he offered things like this, now, let's, let's do a double click on this. I talk about building innovation academies, not just broad stroke for software or hardware. It's actually for blockchain. It's actually for crypto, you know, lots of areas. You know, it's very focused and channel, we might start with one big innovation academy across these different areas. But we have to hit the hot-button stuff, right? Things that are dominating the world, where is the world going? You know, for example, Things that are dominating the world, where is the world going? You know, for example, driverless cars, right? The autonomous cars, that's a big one. You know, you look at blockchain, what kind of problems can it solve? What about crypto? How can this make transactions a lot more secure down the road, right? I think we need to innovate and nothing like the bright young minds to do that. So this is definitely part of my agenda. And we are looking forward to doing this, Sabri, and I would love to collaborate with you and get your ideas further on this topic, you know? I'm pretty sure because you asked this, there are certain, certain thoughts and ideas you have. And we would love to hear from you as well, you know, and, and let's plan for a follow on meeting if we can possibly. Back to you, Emily.
Yeah. So the next question that we have is from Manav. And he is asking, "Can you explain how your neighborhood pandemic preparedness team can, can be expanded to solve other issues in the community?"
Yes. So, so it's kind of interesting, Manav, because the neighborhood pandemic preparedness team that we launched was modeled after our neighborhood watch program, you know? So we have done this time and time again. And when there were burglaries happening, we engaged our neighbors. I had like over a hundred meetings in Saratoga. And we brought the community together in different neighborhoods. We identified new neighborhood leaders and we empowered them to take charge. And that was a phenomenal experience because what happened with that was neighbors figured out a way to connect, communicate and collaborate. And, and what I had to do was just step out of the way, you know, once we had done that, you know, neighbors took charge and all I was doing was a facilitator. I had a bunch of interns, actually it goes back even in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. I had some very bright interns. They actually taught me quite a few things and some of them ended up at Stanford, at MIT. I mean, they were very sharp kids. And, and collaborating together, we figured out some of the gating factors that are preventing these neighborhood watch programs from, from going live. So when I launched mine, it took me like six months in my neighborhood. But then we created a model, a framework to have neighborhood watch programs go live in a week. I kid you not, in one week, our neighborhood watch programs would go live right after the first meeting. So, so that's the model we applied to neighborhood pandemic preparedness with engaging neighborhood volunteers and leaders from every neighborhood to take charge. So some of the things that they did was they would drop flyers, they would go around meeting, you couldn't meet with them. So they would drop flyers and say, "If you need help, call me up." And that's how we discovered an amazing army of volunteers who are willing to help out. Now, this can be applied to any scenario. A problem that is impacting us, a problem that is impacting us can, how can we create a close collaboration amongst neighbors? I believe we have a framework. Now I'm not sure where it could be applied next. But all the community events we run here, you know, that I referenced, we have Silicon Valley youth, people from all over Silicon Valley who join the programs we have. Every Sunday, we take over the community center with offering these programs, right? The only way we make it work is because there are volunteers who sign up to help us out. So we have figured out a way to engage and bring a larger team together. And as a congressional rep, my objective is to also have, like, we call it, let's see, the Neighborhood Leadership Council. In every city, we will establish Neighborhood Leadership Council from different neighborhoods that will be providing us guidance, providing me guidance in terms of how we can finesse, what are the types of problems that I need to be solving? And, and together we will create policies to help impact those types of problems. So Manav, it's a great question and we have a track record of doing that. But we will only make that better such that it is all inclusive. We want to ensure that neighbors from every part of the district feel they are included, feel that they can have their say and they can apply their guidance towards my office, my congressional office to addressing the problems, not only of the neighborhood, but also all of Silicon Valley. Thank you so much, Manav.
Thank you, Rishi. And obviously you can learn more about Rishi's policies at rishikumar.com where you can find more detailed policy papers on practically every single topic that we mentioned today. So since we are at the end here, we're going to wrap up. Thank you for everyone for attending today's town hall meeting. Thank you for everyone's engagement and questions. And again, our town hall meetings are held on every, the last Sunday of every month. So we hope to see you at our next town hall meeting as well. And again, if you'd like to support our campaign, you can either apply as volunteer director or you can financially contribute to our campaign using the links that I just dropped in the chat right now. So thank you for everyone for coming again.
And let's give a big round of applause to Emily. She's done an amazing job. And I just get inspired with the intelligence we have, folks like Emily. They are showing me the way, they are guiding me and they are pushing me sometimes in different directions. And it will ultimately play out with how we'll be able to help our district. I really appreciate all of you joining us, taking the time today. And if you have any questions, final words, we would love to hear from you. All right. So let's wrap it up. The next town hall meeting will be, when will it be, Emily?
It will be the, again, town hall meetings are last Sunday of every month. So we hope to see you in the April town hall meeting. It will be the exact same time and you can register on Rishi's website. And also be, make sure to look out for an email that will remind you when the town hall meeting is coming up.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate it. We'll, we'll stay in touch. Please shoot me an email, rishi@rishikumar.com if you have any other questions at all. And I'm happy to meet you with you one on one as well. So just reach out. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Emily.
Thank you.